Going to open the February 11th, 2025, meeting of the Gloucester City Council. This public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. Technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council, and a quorum is present. The meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the city of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental disability, family status, immigration, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. Tonight, we have with us so far in attendance Ward Two Councillor Dylan Penson.
Good evening.
Councillor-at-Large Valerie Gillman. Ward One Councillor Scott Memard.
Good evening, everybody.
Ward Three Councillor Marjorie Grace. Councillor-at-Large Jason Grow. Myself, Council President, Councillor-at-Large. Councillors Worthley and Majota are expected to arrive shortly, and Councillor Nolan is out this evening. And we have Grace Poyer, our City Clerk, and Danielle Argentina. Argentino. Sorry. Our Assistant City Clerk. And we have Chris Lassito, our Harbor Master. Are the members of staff that are with us so far. Councillor-at-Large, Councillor Worthley is just arriving, will be seated momentarily. It's a good thing because it's his turn to start the flag salute. So if we'll stand for the flag salute.
Page allegiance to the flag.
United States of America, Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
And next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Oral communications.
The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the city council refers matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Month Avenue. Good evening all. Today, I heard from the mayor's office regarding an update for the demolition of East Gloucester School, and it read, part of it reads as follows. The demolition contract has been awarded, and we are having a pre-contract meeting later this week to work through some of the details. We are still on track for spring for this work to happen. Thank you Pam Toby for reaching out. It is very much appreciated. However, on page eighty-seven of the new comprehensive plan, it reads as follows. Location, Eight Davis Street Extension. Site name, East Gloucester School Field, Parsons Playground, Maxwell Parsons. Owner, Gloucester City of. Manager, Department of Public Works. Current use, schools, parks, playgrounds, and athletic fields. Condition, fair. Recreation potential, high. Playground, athletic fields, parking. Funds used, zero. Left blank. Level of protection, no protection. Acres, five point seven three. The plan continues with the turnaround that sits in front of the school, and it also reads no protection on it. How can this be when it has always had protection? Please check the past comprehensive plan plans. I came before you this evening because I feel that there needs to be a correction on this new comprehensive plan based on all of the previous information we have received since this project began, and as referred to in the deed signed by Mayor Virga on April first, 2024, which states, quote, "are hereby subject to the protection afforded under Article ninety-seven of the amendments of the Mass Constitution of the Commonwealth in perpetuity", end quote. This land, along with the land adjacent to it, Maxwell Parsons Playground, which most people think is connected, should be protected and preserved forever. And as Mayor Virga stated in the October sixth, 2022 letter to me, reads as follows. We are now returning the space to its original purpose as open space. He also adds, I have included a copy of the plans that confirm this finding. I look forward to hearing from the administration as the next steps regarding this project takes place. This neighborhood, East Gloucester, as well as the Webster Street neighborhood, especially the children, all of the children, are eager to have the open space that were promised when the building committee chose.
Twenty seconds.
Chose this space as a replacement for Meadows Field. Thank you for your time, Mary Ann Boucher.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the auditorium that would like to speak under oral communications? Thank you, Mary Ann. Seeing no one, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Confirmation of new appointments.
All right. We went over what needs to be done with Marjorie Frank. Oh, she's going to take the lead. Here, see what, there's some exceptions that need to be done here.
Archives Committee Peggy Kegans, Committee Recommendation on Motion by Councillor Grace, seconded by Councillor Nolan, the ordinance and administration committee voted two in favor, one absent to recommend that City Council appoint Peggy Palkins to the Archives Committee term ending two sixteen twenty-eight, and I so move.
Second.
Peggy, are you here? Would you like to say anything? No? Okay. Do we have any questions? Does, does the council have any questions? No, I guess you're good. So we have a motion and a second. Motion made by Councillor Majota. Who seconded it?
Councillor Grace.
Councillor, seconded by Councillor Grace. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Eight to zero. One absent.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you, and you need, you've been sworn in. Have you taken your ethics test? Thank you. And thank you for stepping up.
Committee Recommendation, this is for the Gloucester Cultural Council, Gloucester Committee Recommendation on Motion by Councillor Nolan, seconded by Councillor Grace, the ordinance and administration committee voted two in favor. Zero opposed, one absent to recommend to the City Council appoint Louis. Open up, I'm sorry, I got to pronounce the name wrong. Thank you. To the Gloucester Cultural Council, term ending two sixteen twenty-eight, and I so move.
Second.
Is there any questions? Motion made by Councillor Majota, seconded by Councillor Grace. Councillors, do you have any questions? Louis, you're, you're here? No, Louis is not here, so we don't have any questions. And he is not online. Is there any reason to not move this forward?
No.
No. Okay. End of discussion, I guess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Eight to zero, one absent.
Gloucester Historical Commission. Committee Recommendation on Motion by Councillor Grace, seconded by Councillor Nolan, the ordinance and administration committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to recommend that City Council appoint Molly Hardy to the Gloucester Historical Commission, term ending two fifteen twenty-six, and I so move.
Second.
A motion made by Councillor Majota, seconded by Councillor Grace. And Molly, are you here? Would you like to speak to us, or just, does anyone have questions for Molly? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent.
Congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you.
Next. Waterways Board. Committee Recommendation on Motion by Councillor Nolan, seconded by Councillor Grace, the ordinance and administration committee voted two in favor, zero opposed, one absent to recommend that the City Council appoint John McCarthy to the Waterways Board, term ending two sixteen twenty-eight, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Majota, seconded by Councillor Grace. John, I see you're online. Do you want to come and speak to us, or, I think we all know you pretty well. And you're up.
Yeah, I think everybody knows me. You know, it's just, it'd be my honor to keep serving the city in some capacity, and I look forward to the challenge.
Any questions of Mr. McCarthy? Nope. Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero. Thank you, John, for stepping up. One absent. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Any councillors wish to pull matters off of the consent agenda? Councillor Grow.
Call City Council Order two thousand twenty-five dash zero one four.
Aye. Councillor Gillman.
I'd like to remove the ONA minutes of February third, two thousand and twenty-five.
Aye. Yep.
I see in the notes here, there's an order I put in that's being referred to the Traffic Commission as well, and I indicated that it didn't need to go there to the Clerk's office, but it's listed as such.
Correct, we haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, taking things off.
Hold on. Councillor Grace is, is representing ONA.
In terms of.
You'll find out, all shall be revealed. All shall be revealed.
Okay.
We are pulling Sam Parisi's appointment to the Fishery Commission, and we are pulling Council Order CC twenty twenty-five dash zero one five.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second. Motion made by Councillor Gillman, seconded by Councillor Memard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Okay. First, Councillor Grow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I need to make a motion in accordance with GCO Section one point eleven point four B to waive notice to butters in accordance with GCO Section one point eleven point four B and set the public hearing date to Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, and further to vote to refer to PND and the planning board.
Second. Motion made by Councillor Grow, seconded by Councillor Gillman. Discussion?
Everybody understands this is because this is a citywide.
I just wanted to give Councillor Grow a chance to, like we did last time, explain what we're waiving for notification, just for anybody who's listening at home.
Anytime we have a citywide zoning change, we can waive notice to butters as being cost prohibitive, and that is what we're doing.
To mail a letter to every single resident would be really expensive, so we're waiving that, but it's still open for public testimony and hearings. Thank you.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Councillor Grace.
Council Order twenty twenty-five dash oh one five does not need to be referred to the Traffic Commission, so that's being pulled.
Motion to send it to order.
Oh, you want to make a motion to send it to ONA? Councillor Grace?
And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councillor Grace, seconded by Councillor Benson. Did you, or Councillor Majota? I heard it from over there, I just, seconded by Councillor Majota. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. And next order of business, Madam Clerk.
We still have the.
Oh, Councillor Gillman, sorry.
Thank you. The ONA meeting of February third, two thousand and twenty-five, I was present. I attended via Zoom, and I wasn't noted in the minutes, so I'd like to amend the minutes to add me to the list, and I so move. Second.
Motion made by Councillor Gillman, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Next order of business now, Madam Clerk. Yep. We can be patient.
Next is the February sixth, two thousand and twenty-five Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report.
Councillor Memard, sorry. Didn't know you needed queuing out.
Always, Council President.
Sorry.
Because of snow and then City Hall being closed, we held a Zoom meeting for a change. And before you tonight are a couple of items for your consideration. The first is a memorandum from the Regional Prevention Director requesting acceptance of two five hundred dollar, quote unquote, eighty-four movement startup grants, with two separate motions. The first on a motion by myself, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Budget and Finance Committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept a private grant under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, an eighty-four movement chapter startup grant through the Health Resources in Action in the amount of five hundred dollars, and this is for the purpose of funding supportive preventative initiatives in the middle school Gloucester Youth Leadership Council, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Memard, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Discussion?
Aye. Councillor Worthley, would you like to add something?
I just wanted to clarify where the number eighty-four comes from. The eighty-four movement is because there's a report that says eighty-four percent of middle school students do not use tobacco products, and the goal is to get that to be a hundred percent, and so this grant, these two grants for five hundred dollars each is to try to move that number up. So the eighty-four movement startup grant is to prevent tobacco, and I think specifically vape use among teens. So I'm happy to support it, as my fellow council members on BNF did as well.
And Chelsea and her team from her Board of Health did a good job presenting this to us. What's the maiden seconded?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent.
And the second part of the same motion on a motion by myself, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Budget and Finance Committee voted roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council accept a private grant under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a eighty-four movement chapter startup grant through the Health Resources in Action in the amount of five hundred dollars again. This is for the purpose of funding supportive preventative initiatives at the Gloucester High School Youth Leadership Council, and there is again no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Memard, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent.
And our second item this evening from Budget and Finance is the major funding through the state for our elder services in the, in the Rose Baker Senior Center, and this is in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand fifty dollars. The Committee Recommendation on Motion by myself, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Budget and Finance voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that the City Council accept, under Mass General Law forty-four fifty-three A, a Massachusetts State Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty-five Council on Aging Formula Grant allocation from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand fifty dollars. There is no local match for this grant, and the grant period is from July first, two thousand and twenty-four, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Memard, seconded by Councillor Worthley. Discussion?
Usually get this grant a little later in the year, so that's good news there, and it's, it's gone up by a dollar per allocation, and it's based on an actual census of seniors that utilize the senior center services, both at the Rose Baker Senior Center and on various field trips and excursions.
Very good. Any more discussion?
Aye.
Councillor Gillman.
So as an ex officio non-voting member of the Council on Aging, I have to say that Rose Baker is vibrant, it's exciting, and this type of assistance is really appreciated. So, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. Okay. I am, I'm going to take the next item, the vote, because Councillor Worthley and Councillor Grace can't vote on this, so we'll take this at the end. Also, anybody who is interested, we are also going to continue the Twenty Main Street vote to ratify or whatever the council vote. To what? To adopt the, the council vote. That's going to be continued to the next city council meeting. Since we received it so late, and the members need to have a chance to, to read through it. All right.
We want to add that the applicant also authorized and okayed us being beyond the ninety day period.
Right, we got a waiver for an extra five days, which then allows us, there would have been ninety-one days to the next city council meeting. Yep. Because if we took no action, it should be automatically granted, possibly without any of the conditions. So. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
There was no Planning and Development Meeting on February fifth. The next order of business is Public Hearing two thousand and twenty-five, number three, Council Order two thousand and twenty-five, number four, Councillor Gross, to amend GCO Chapter Five, Building and Building Regulations, Article Five, Short Term Rentals, Section five dash sixty-six, Requirements for the Operation of Short Term Rentals, subsection E.
Oh, I will open the public hearing. Speaking in favor, I guess, on the proponent. So this was, this was put forward to because it, it came, I came to find out that we, people who owned a unit within their home, so it's, they basically are renting a room with maybe a little, you know, microwave and a refrigerator and bathroom attached, but it's within their home, so it's a shared residence. And sometimes they have another unit, another building, outbuilding on their property, and it just didn't make any sense because it's certainly not going to add to the housing stock by them not having the ability to, to rent that extra building that they had because the only reason it would be is the, the less valuable unit which is in their home would probably be the second unit. To take that away would just be, would defeat the purpose of this ordinance, so that's why I put this forward. And that's that. Anybody want to speak in, in opposition? Do we have any communications on this?
We do not.
All right, questions from the councillors? Go ahead.
So I just want to clarify. So this essentially ignores, for the sake of, of the ordinance, anything inside someone's house if they also have an exterior, a non-resident occupied unit, correct?
They have.
So they can have one in the house, or they can, can they have multiple in the house they live in? Is that? I thought we said that basically that was not regulated by number of days or.
Right, it's not. So if it's a shared unit within their house.
Their house, they can have it. But if it's outside and non-occupied by them, or that's still limited to one.
Yep, whether it's a non-owner occupied or an owner occupied.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's really clear.
Yep. Yes, that doesn't make any changes to that. Councillor Benson.
Can you quickly define what you mean by the second? What kind of units are these? You're saying, I heard you, as you were speaking, these units would not have like a full kitchen in them, is that what you're thinking? I heard you briefly just saying that, so.
That would be a two-family if it had a full kitchen.
Okay. Yep, I understand, I do understand that, I just wanted, so this would be like a shared of say.
This is a shared, shared unit, yes.
Like a.
Shared residential unit.
Okay, so like a basement or something like that.
Basement attic, bedroom, you know.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'm supporting this, I know a lot of folks.
Someone told me they converted their master bedroom into one because it had its own en suite bathroom.
Okay.
And lots of times they're true, you know, they do put out some pastries in the morning and coffee for people.
Yeah, no, I, I've, I know a lot of people have like, if they have a kitchen in, in our unit, or it's like a attachment, something.
I know, I know a few seniors that this is a make it or break it situation, to have that shared unit.
I'm, yeah, I have people in my ward that have spoken to me about this, and they have a basement that they rent out that's furnished as a microwave, and it helps offset their mortgage, putting away college funds, so I will be supporting this.
More discussion? Does this need to be, this can just be a regular straight-up vote, right? Oh, yes, that's right. Thank you. Close the public hearing. I, I guess, Councillor Worthley, you want to make the motion?
Sure, I'm happy to. This is at the bottom of the page here. Yes, Committee Recommendation on Motion of Councillor Gross, seconded by myself. The ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinance, Chapter Five, Building and Building Regulations, Article Five, Short Term Rentals, Section five dash sixty-six, requirements to the, I'm sorry, requirements for the operation of short-term rentals, subsection E, as follows. Give a second. E, an operator may only register to operate one dwelling unit as a short-term rental. If an operator owns two or more properties, owns one, and is listed as a manager or agent for a second that is owned by an LLC, for example, that operator must choose one or the other to be registered as a short-term rental. No operator shall have more than one legal or equitable title of beneficial interest in any dwelling unit used for short-term rental, except, and now we're deleting, as provided for above, and adding, an operator of a shared residential unit may register a second short-term rental. An operator may hire a property management company to list and manage short-term rentals, but the registration must be in the operator's name, and I so move.
That was short-term rental unit, in blue.
Sorry? Do I need to say it again? Or, an operator of a shared residential unit may register a second short-term rental unit. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Councillor Worthley, seconded by Councillor Gross. I guess we already had discussion, didn't we?
Little bit of discussion.
Cart before the horse. Councillor Worthley.
I just want to add to this, I appreciate Councillor Gross amending this to incorporate sort of an unintended consequence. Someone who's renting a unit in their home won't be disallowed having one other unit somewhere in the city that they rent out for short-term rental. To try to count the one in their home as their only one negates them, their ability to have a full rental unit somewhere else. So this just makes it easier, in my opinion, for people who are renting out a room or such in their own home to be able to continue to do that. So I voted in favor of it at the committee and would support it again tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Gillman.
So I'd just like to read your one comment that was made at Subcommittee, which I think is helpful. is helpful, just to, as, to repeat what councillor Worthley just said. Councillor Gross stated that this was to rectify an oversight in regards to detached rental units where an owner also lived on the property, and short-term rentals that were on the property where an operator lived would not count towards the allowed number of short-term rental units the individual could operate. It's exactly what was just said, but this was in the minutes, and I think it's important because.
Except for, it could be somewhat in error, because it does not have to be on the premises.
Okay, well, thank you. So, fine, that, appreciate it.
I misspoke.
I will be supportive.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, eight to zero, one absent. We are going to continue the next item, the decision to adopt special counsel permit two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero three, the application of Twenty Main Street, the twenty-fifth. We continue to February twenty-fifth, and I think then we will go right to, most will be the next order of business, then we'll go back after we continue.
Councillor's request to the mayor.
Okay, and I guess start with councillor Worthley.
Thank you, I'll just be brief, I want to just take a moment to give a shout-out to the Department of Public Works. I think this may be the best snow removal we've ever seen, and I think they're getting better all the time. There's always someone who will complain, and I think that, I understand why people do that, but I would say overall, we should be very proud of the work that the DPW has done, especially with the storm, and there's nothing to do with that except just continue to commend their hard work. And that's it for me.
I go. Councillor Grace.
I just want to.
Sorry, I jumped right past everybody else. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted just, you know, second what Jeff said. You know, Mike and his crew have worked so hard, and they did a fabulous job, and I think it's really nice to say something positive that's going on, instead of always going to the negative, so kudos to Mike and his team, thank you.
All right, now we'll go back to alphabetical. Councillor Benson.
I have nothing.
Councillor Gillman.
I have nothing.
Councillor Grow. You're good. Councillor Majota.
I will send my request to the mayor's office.
Thank you. Councillor Memmard.
I would also like to join councillor Worthley and councillor Marjorie Benson, Grace.
Marjorie Benson, you got changed?
Yeah. You got married.
But don't we know?
You're related now. Again, just thanking the DPW, the only complaint I receive from constituents was that they wondered why the plows were so busy. And again, job well done to the DPW and the city of Gloucester. Thank you.
Yes, and I would like to echo that. Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Point of order, I'm speaking. I would also like to echo that the, you know, all the sidewalks on Washington Street have been plowed, I mean, you know, sometimes it's a little messy, they can't get around things, but it was done pretty well. It took them a couple of days to get around the city with the sidewalk plow, but commend, commend them. All right, now we will, you guys can leave us. Yep. Thank you. We'll recess for two or three minutes.
Mics are still on.
Farewell, everybody.
The next snowstorm.
Right. Have a good night.
Finally got some room down here.
Are you? Let's go. We're not supposed to have fun. Poor elected officials. Bloody.
Everyone see our Gloucester star on the Super Bowl? The young gigoloni fellow who's on the McDonald, the Dunkin' Donuts ad with Athlet? Or of the Cinderella program that he stats last year?
Okay, we are back in session. All right, madam clerk.
This is from the February third, two thousand and twenty-five, Ordinances and Administration Standing Committee Report, council order twenty-five, number eight, councillor Gross, Gloucester City Council, to review mail-in voting and early voting options for possible special election.
So, I think that we should probably, I'll open this up to questions. Councillor Benson.
Okay, just for clarification, so with our vote tonight, we will be allowing vote-by-mail for the special election? Or if we vote, we haven't made a decision, is that what? Just to clarify, because I'm looking at vote to take, no action.
I'll let Grace answer all questions.
Yeah, so I'm looking here, sorry, sorry, I'm looking here and says, a vote to take no action will leave the vote by, so that's, if we vote, if we don't do anything, we'll still have that option, is that correct?
Correct. Vote-by-mail is automatic for any election, unless the city council votes to opt out of vote-by-mail, that is an option that's only available for local elections.
I knew, I understood that, and that's, so thank you, I'm just looking here and I'm just curious, so, no, I, that's my question, I'll have a discussion.
Councillor Grow.
So, I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask you to explain this again, one more time. If we leave mail-in voting, people have to specifically request a mail-in ballot? We don't send ballots to everybody, correct?
Correct. For local elections, someone has to ask for a vote-by-mail ballot. We are required by law to put vote-by-mail applications in any mailing, any acknowledgement notice that we send to someone who has registered to vote or changed their address, but those are the only quote-unquote "automatic" mailings. Every resident or every voter in the city will not be getting an application, they'll have to request one on their own initiative.
Remind me of the potential expense of that?
So, in two thousand and twenty-four, the cost to mail a vote-by-mail ballot was ninety-seven cents, and I just have some numbers here that might be helpful for you, regardless of what your decision is. I think it's good for people to, for voters to know this, so that they can make maybe better decisions when they choose the option that they want to use when they vote. So, the breakdown for how much time it takes the office to process a single vote-by-mail ballot is two hundred seconds. The city clerk's office spent almost three hundred hours processing vote-by-mail ballots for the September election, and close to five hundred hours for the November election. For the November election, out of those hours that we spent, a hundred and fifteen of them were spent on ballots that were never returned, and in September, a hundred and fifty hours were spent on ballots that were never returned. The money spent on labor for vote-by-mail for the September third election, and by labor, that's just staff costs, not extra temporary help. It was about eighty-five hundred, and out of that eighty-five hundred, about forty-eight hundred was spent, staff labor was spent on ballots that were not returned. And in November, about fourteen thousand dollars was spent in labor costs for mailing out vote-by-mail ballots, and of that, about thirty-seven hundred was spent on, in labor costs on ballots that were not returned. So, I just think it's important that people, whatever your decision is, whether you want to just keep it on the books for this election, that is totally up to the council, but maybe help educate voters that when you do ask for that, there is a cost involved, and there is time involved behind the scenes, can certainly exercise their right to use that option, but please follow through with it if at all possible.
And just for clarification, we have to print out mail-in, vote-by-mail ballots, are they different than the ones that appear at the ballots, the election?
Yes, there are election day ballots, and then there are absentee slash vote-by-mail ballots, so we will be printing out absentee ballots regardless of what you decide tonight, because absentee voting by mail and absentee voting in person will still be available to voters who are not going to be able to go to the polls on election day.
But with that, because I know some, just for a refresher, could we explain what's the difference? Because I know people that are watching probably wondering, what is the difference between absentee versus vote-by-mail?
Vote-by-mail, voting is typically called no excuse vote-by-mail, you don't have to have a reason other than wanting to. Absentee voting is for people who are not able to be at the polls on election day due to absence from the city, a physical disability that keeps them from getting to the polls, or a religious reason.
Okay.
Councillor Gillman.
So, honestly, a person, it's trying to be more opportunistic for a voter, but actually, they could say that they're gonna be out and still get one, right? So, this is just kind of something that is added to make sure that we're doing even more, to make it convenient for them. Would you say that that's kind of the case of why this has come up?
The absentee ballot application does not require that the voter tell us why they are requesting it. We do let voters know when they request an absentee ballot, that absentee ballots are for, and the reasons that I gave you, but they don't, they don't check that off, they're signing under the penalties of perjury that they are eligible to cast an absentee ballot, but they don't actually attest to the reason why they are requesting one. The vote-by-mail came out in two thousand and twenty, I think probably started with the pandemic, because people weren't, were nervous about going to the polls, and from there, it just stayed. The Votes Act of two thousand and twenty-two just sealed it into the law.
AI through the chair, I have a follow-up question. So, would, so this, in essence, was kind of an unfunded mandate, right? A requirement that we have to add this? Has the state given us any type of dispensa, some financial reprieve because of the amount of work that this takes in the clerk's office?
There is a cost certification survey that municipalities, the clerk's office in a municipality fills out for the vote-by-mail and early voting costs for state elections, and that goes to the Department of Revenue. I'm not made aware when that reimbursement, if there even is any, hits the books in Gloucester, it does not come through my department, and I think, I believe we were reimbursed for some things in two thousand and twenty, but I don't know when that was, it's, I think it takes a while in coming.
And is that strictly for a state? That reimbursement wouldn't be available for a city, would it?
That's correct, it would not be.
Councillor Grow.
Where, where are we with early voting options? Is that still something that we're gonna be expecting to be approved by the registrar voters?
The registrars will be having a meeting tomorrow to discuss that, whether or not they want to make a recommendation to the city council to offer early voting. It has to be a recommendation of fifty percent or more of the board of registrars. Council can't move forward with early voting without the registrar's positive recommendation.
And we need to make the decision on early voting now, before, I'm sorry, the vote-by-mail before, the reason I'm asking is because I would hate to negate early vote, or vote-by-mail, only to then find out the registrar, board of registrars doesn't approve the idea of early voting, because I think we need one or the other, or both, because we're having an election during spring break, so a lot of people are gonna be away.
If, if the council wants to opt out of vote-by-mail, it does require a public hearing forty-five days prior to the election. I don't have a calendar, actually, I do, if I can look on my computer. If you, if you voted tonight to keep things as is, then that's that. If you thought, if you were to vote to suspend early voting, vote, I'm sorry, vote-by-mail for this election, then you would need to hold a public hearing, and I just want to check the date, so if you could hold on just a moment.
Sure. While you're doing that, so we don't have to do anything tonight, and it stays as is, would we have another bite of the apple to, to opt out after we found out what the early voting looks like?
Oh, the forty? Public hearing would have to be on February twenty-fifth, but I don't know, I can't speak for what the board is gonna vote tomorrow, you know, if the council, there is the possibility that if the council voted to keep things as is with vote-by-mail, then the board might be more reluctant to offer early voting as well. I don't know that they will or won't be, I'm just throwing out some scenarios. If you were to vote to not have, if you were to have a public hearing to not have vote-by-mail, then the board perhaps would consider having early voting to give the voters that option of something beyond election day. I'm just throwing out scenarios, I don't know how they'll be voting tomorrow.
Sure. The cost for early voting is less, though, than it would be if did vote-by-mail, because it's a single.
Cost for early voting for this election would be far less. Early voting is something that we would be able to provide in the office, it's a single-question ballot, there would not be a lot of time involved, but just keep in mind, it would be, it would be easier to do early voting than it would be to do vote-by-mail. To do both, we could do it, we've certainly done it before with much bigger elections than this, but doing both at the same time obviously increases the workload of what goes into an election on top of the other things that our office is processing in April.
And remind me, how long ahead of time do we have early voting? What's the window from when it begins to when it shuts?
Early voting has to end, I think it's seven, seven days prior to the election. It's, there's a little more wiggle room with local elections on what dates the registrars want to set for it, if they, if they go that route. I think I have it wrong with the seven days prior.
That was two, but I'm more interested in how quick, how soon it starts before the election, so is it a week, two weeks?
I believe it can't be any more than two weeks prior.
How about vote-by-mail? How, how soon could, or an absent, obviously, those are two separate buckets, but how soon would say if we allow vote-by-mail, how soon could people be voting?
Once we get the ballots ordered, and we're in a place where we can actually, you know, get the whole process of auditing the applications, you know, getting things organized and ready to go, it's really as soon as we have the ballots available.
Yeah, and just so people understand that those, even if someone is voting by-mail, that those ballots are not counted until election day or election night, they're not going into that machine.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just, so, because sometimes there's misconceptions about how early voting and vote-by-mail happen, so I think that was important to make clear. I don't know if we're, have more questions, but if, if there are more questions from other councillors, if not, I just was gonna have a comment, but I will wait until there's more questions, if there's other questions from other councillors. If there's other questions from other counselors.
There's no motion offered.
There's no motion offered, yeah.
The only, the only motion would be to, is if we opted out.
To trigger a public hearing.
Right.
I'm inclined, because we, we can also talk about early voting options because it's on the agenda. So I think since, we should also discuss that tonight.
Yeah, I'm a big fan of early voting.
And then with the possibility of a suggestion for the Board of Registars that they're for tomorrow.
So can I comment? So based on what Grace has said, if we, if we, if we vote to leave it, or if we make no, no action, we take no action, that leaves a vote early, this is really, take no action leaves vote by mail in place. If we opt to opt out, we would trigger a public hearing in two weeks where we could decide to opt out again, dependent on what the registrar, the Board of Registrar says. I'm inclined, my, my personal preference, if I had one or the other, I would take the early voting. I think it's longer, it's easier, it's less costly, impactful. I want as many people to be able to vote on this issue as possible. I think that by opting out tonight, we give ourselves another bite at the apple where we can overturn our decision to, and leave it in based on what the, what the Board of Registars does. With the, with the caveat that I would strongly suggest that the Board of Registars approve early voting. I think it's the best option for, for folks on this issue.
I'm considering this is, well, I guess Tuesday is a workday. So absentee voting is, is always an option.
An option until twelve noon the day before an election.
Councilor Gilman.
Well, I've, I've got a question because I like the spirit of what you're saying, but I, but I have a question in terms of who, like, like is there a procedural reason why they have the opportunity to weigh in on that decision? That perhaps is separate from what we are able to vote?
It's in Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section twenty. Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section twenty-five B, gives the options for early voting to the Board of Registrars and to the, the vote by mail to the city council.
So, and I kind of don't know if we should be telling them what we think.
We can request. Why not?
I think it's important that we let them know sort of how we feel because it's important that people are able to vote.
As long as we are clear, if we decide to do this right now, that we, it's a recommendation, but it's not theoretically a vote, right? Because we don't want to over.
Alls we're doing is voting to recommend that they take it into consideration.
Okay.
I'm just looking up in the law right now for the timeline of how long early voting is and when it starts.
I just think Council Groh said it perfectly, like just a few minutes ago. You know, we have a chance, two weeks, whether this goes to public hearing to reverse our decision or to keep our decision. So it's really nothing to lose. We're just hoping that we have the opportunity to have early voting.
We're trying to provide our voters with the most convenient options to cast their vote on this matter. This is not, this is not a normal election for a lot of people. So there's, who turns out is obviously crucial to the outcome. And it's hard to say what motivates folks to take the initiative to cast their ballot on a matter like this.
Oh, may I, Counselor?
Yep.
President, so, because we are kind of deliberating on our opinions right now. My, my biggest concern is that this vote is happening during school vacation week. And if it's happening during school vacation week, there could be people that, I guess you can get an absentee ballot if you, if you declare that you need one for, because you're going to be away. But I guess I, I was just thinking that there could be a benefit as much as I, I feel badly about the work that it takes and how many people don't even use it when they get it. I just don't want any reasons to be thrown out there in terms of why people are a little bit not that happy with having to vote on vacation week, which we know is because we need to use all our schools and the schools are empty during vacation week. So it works out better in many cases because of that. So that's just my, my two cents. But I appreciate this discussion and I haven't made up my mind.
I, I appreciate your input there and I appreciate everyone's input. And what I, I'm unpopular maybe, and I do appreciate all the work that the clerk's office does and the work that you put in extra time and working for another municipality. I greatly appreciate and see how much time goes into mailing out ballots. But I think strongly that we should have every option on the table for voting. And I believe that we should have mail-in, mail-in voting, early voting and day voting. This is a decision that the people are going to have to make on a very important issue. And I think that any ability to allow people to vote is important and putting any hindrance on that, I just can't get behind. So I think we really should have mail-in ballot, mail-in voting, early voting. Obviously absentee is already, already baked in. And then voting on that election day. And you said it's, it's a Thursday, it's, it's not a Tuesday. Is that correct? Okay, I just wanted to make.
Correct.
Okay, so that's just clear too. So that's where I stand on it. And I think very much, and I, but again, I do really appreciate the work that you all do. And I'm just, my view is we need to make voting in any election, no matter what it is. We have to make every option available for the people to vote. And I, in good conscience, cannot vote on anything that would hinder people's ability.
I'm not sure it's an either or question. So.
What I mean when you said, mine is that, I understand what you're saying, but mine, my view is that I want every option on the table for voting.
Yeah, I wasn't disputing you.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
I was saying, I don't think that this is an either or issue.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Grace, question for you. How, do you know how the Board of Registars typically votes on early voting? What's their track record?
I don't. I don't think that they had a vote on it for the last municipal election. Council voted to keep vote by mail intact for the 2023 municipal elections. So I don't believe that the Board of Registars took it up. And prior to that, there weren't, it wasn't applicable.
Would it be out of order to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Registars that they affirm early voting as a recommendation from the city council? It would be non-binding, they can make up their mind.
We can make a recommendation to take it under consideration.
I would, I'd like to make that motion, yeah.
What is the motion?
The motion is for the Board of Registars to affirm early voting as a recommendation from the city council, under advisement.
I'd say take it under consideration.
Take it under, whatever you want to say. I'm, I'm good with that.
Rather than affirm.
Well, you know, we say vote, we're recommending that vote positively at that, is what I'm saying.
And I second that affirmation.
So what, how does this motion read?
The city coun, the Board of Registars, under, in a non-binding recommendation from the city council, affirm early voting for the referendum.
On April twenty-fourth.
They have to, so with the, the vote by mail, it's, it's automatically happening. With early voting, they have to actually make a vote to, to recommend to the city council that you vote on it if they actually want to recommend that to you.
What if they don't?
Then you don't have early voting.
We're asking, we're asking them to consider it, not affirm.
Well, we're asking them, yeah, to consider it.
We're asking them to consider it. We can't tell them how to vote.
No, no, it's non-binding. They can vote however they want.
But I think it's more of a, you know, affirming.
They're already going to take it under advisement because they, that's their, that's their role in this process. They're already, they're already going to be discussing it. I'm just saying that we're, we're asking them to, the city council is suggesting that it would be in the, in the community's best interest to positively suggest that we keep early voting.
And then we have a public hearing.
It's, it's getting way too, I think, also we need to ask for this. Will you please consider early voting?
They're doing that. That's why they're meeting.
They're not. They're not necessarily considering it.
They're meeting tomorrow.
It's not on their agenda, so they're meeting.
Tomorrow they're meeting to, let me look at the agenda. Hold on, please.
That's what she said.
It's meeting tomorrow. Yeah? Oh.
The agenda item on the Board of Registrar's meeting agenda is accordance, in accordance with General Law fifty-four, Section twenty-five B, C one, Board of Registrar's review and possible vote on whether or not to offer early voting for the special election.
Saying that we can note to them that council supports early voting and would hope that they would similarly do so.
I agree.
I like that one.
So your motion that you made is.
We'll roll the tape back, but however it goes, let me say second.
I mean, I'm just saying, I wasn't trying to second.
No discussion yet.
But anyway.
So say that again. Jeez.
Write it down.
I'm a free-form poet. Okay. Move that the city council recommend to the Board of Registars a, a positive affirmation, if we can, that the city council would, would like early voting for the referendum. And I submit.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Groh, seconded by Councilor Benson. Discussion.
I, as I, as I said before, you made the motion that I agree, but that would not take away from my position on mail-in voting. I, I support that, but I also believe.
Separate issue.
But I understand, I just want to make it clear where my.
We're having discussion on this motion.
I know, but we're.
We're having discussion on this motion.
Okay, but to make it clear where I'm standing, but I understand.
On this motion only, please.
Okay, well, you can, you can gavel me out then, so, okay. I will be supporting, I support this motion and I, again, early voting is a, early voting is an option along with other options to allow for more participation. So I'm glad you brought that forward and I strongly recommend that the Board of Registars affirms early voting tomorrow.
Positively affirm. Too positive.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Have it, no, six to zero, three absent. Now, vote by mail.
So yes, we keep it as is, a no means that we don't, we're going to.
No action. If we decide to take no action, vote by mail is in.
Second that.
Wait, you don't make the motion that you don't want to make.
Have we a discussion or?
Or what?
On, on if we're not acting on this at all.
You want to have, have discussion about why it's a good idea to either take action or no action?
Yeah, I want to make sure, I've been, I don't want to be gavelled out, you know? You know, I'm paying for this microphone, as Ronald Reagan would say. I'm just kidding. No, I would support, no, I, again, I think that we should take no action. I think that we should allow for every opportunity for voting. This is a very contested issue. There is strong views on both sides. I think people know where I stand on this. But I do strongly believe that we should be having every option for voting. So again, I encourage my fellow counselors to support no action taken.
I agree with Counselor Benson. Anybody else want to weigh in on taking, Councilor Gilman?
Yes. I echo what Counselor Benson said with two things to emphasize. Number one, the fact that this is happening on a Thursday of school vacation week and we don't want anyone snickering about why this is a difficult situation. That's number one. However, I would also say something that I heard Grace say loud and clear is that we need to continue to educate residents. So I think that that should become our goal of some, something that we can do from now until the September and the November election as well, when this is going to come up. Because it is a waste of taxpayers' money to be paying the clerks so much money for something that really is, some people don't even fill it out and they go through the motions and you spend two hundred seconds doing something and it's just, it's just a lot of work. I, I volunteered in the clerk's office, so I know how many people have to touch each one of those ballots and it, and all the audits that you have. It's a lot of work. So I think that should be a goal and I hope my fellow counselors agree that we should take no action tonight.
Any more discussion?
We have no action, so.
Vote by mail up. Make a motion to reconsider my earlier motion on the.
Motion to reconsider on the previous motion for early voting made by Councilor Groh. We have a second on the reconsideration. Seconded by Counselor Mejota. Remember how we vote on reconsiderations, folks?
Ask the club, why not?
All those in favor?
No.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Motion fails, six to zero, three absent.
And that concludes reconsider the vote by mail.
Recommendation of Board of Registars.
Recommendation of Board of Registars. You need to have a vote on that?
Okay. I, I move that we vote to take no action on the mail, vote by mail option.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Groh, seconded by Counselor Benson. Any more discussion on it?
I want to just say. All those in favor, very, have you, have you made fun of me a lot tonight?
Time's up.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I just want to say that this is an important election, no matter which side you sit on. And I think to have all options available for everyone is extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Groh, seconded by Counselor Gilman. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it, six to zero, three absent. Thank you very much.